Today is Monday, April 4th, 2022. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we are going to go ahead and call the meeting to order with a roll call. Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortez.
Here.
And Mayor Walter here. At this time, we will begin with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. At this time, we'll go ahead with our first call to the public this evening. I do not have any public request forms in front of me at this time. However, if you are in the audience or are attending virtually and would like to speak at this time, please raise your hand. Seeing no such movement, we're closing the first call to the public, but there will be a second at the close of the meeting this evening. I am going to move down to the floor area for the presentation portion. Our first presentation this evening is for National Autism Month, and we have a proclamation that we would like to present to local business owners and a family of Old West Homebrew Saloon. You'd like to accompany me up here, and we will share in the proclamation. How are you this evening? Good. You're absolutely fine wherever you stand. That will get it. This way or this way? Let's pick one way, though. Want to take turns with me? So this is a National Autism Acceptance Month, whereas each year, people across the globe take time to recognize the millions of people living with autism spectrum disorder and...
Whereas autism spectrum disorder is a pervasive developmental disorder affecting the social, communication, and behavioral skills of those affected by it and...
Whereas 1 in 68 American children are diagnosed on the autism spectrum and...
Whereas this number has increased over time as identification methods have improved and...
Whereas the town of Florence, Arizona, is honored to take part in the annual observation of Autism Acceptance Month and World Autism Day. Furthermore, Florence Town Hall will be lit blue to show our support for autism awareness during the month of April 2021. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tara Walter of Florence, Arizona, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as National Autism Acceptance Month and join in the nation in recognizing April as National Autism Acceptance Month as a symbol of our commitment to creating a culture of disability awareness and inclusion for all members of our community. (Applause). So I want you guys to share. Let's take a quick picture first, and then I want you guys to share about some amazing things going on at your location and your vision. Are you ready?
So autism, this whole thing is so awesome. Thank you so, so much. You know, our son, who's amazing, is autistic, and we started this journey for our kids. I hope I don't get emotional. I'm apologizing now. So this is huge. This is amazing. But April 2nd... Important to us. We just want to make a difference, and there's a huge need, and we see it every day. And amazing. Thank you so much. And so April 2nd was our first autism event. We went small. We held it at our shop, but it was amazing. It was a huge success, and we're so thankful to everybody that came. It was awesome. The connections that were made for our kids. There were quite a few. We had probably a few hundred that came, and they switched phone numbers. We have multiple events planned around the East Valley, and it's just, that's what this is about. Spreading awareness, making connections, giving them the same opportunities as everybody else. And that's what this is about, bringing awareness. So we're so grateful. Thank you so much.
I want to say thank you, guys, for being in our community. Like I said, local family, local business, and they give a lot. First event was this week, and I know you have a lot of amazing plans for the future. I didn't want to divulge too much without your consent, but if you want to, you can. Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, so we have a big goal. I'm not stopping until it happens, but we... There's a huge need for housing communities for these adults. You know, there's kind of a gray area where they're very independent, but maybe need a little bit of assistance. So we started Happy Hearts Communities, a nonprofit, and we'd love to have it happen here in Florence. We love this town. It's just the closeness, the kindness, amazing people in this town. That we want to create a tiny home community with tiny homes with a center in the middle, you know, teaching them job skills, life skills, where they can live as independently as they possibly can with little assistance and where they can live within the community, learn in the community, work within the community. And we're just going to keep moving and growing. It's Happy Hearts Communities. We have a website. We're on social media, and we're always looking for volunteers and ideas. And so if you have any questions, you can ask me. I'm at the shop, online. I'm around.
Thank you. And I also noticed that we have a member of our Chamber of Commerce in the audience, and through their efforts and leading the way, our town and our chamber are certified. We've all received training with autism awareness and providing the best services available. So we are very excited, and I'd like to present you with this for your shop. (Applause). Good to see you.
Yeah.
All right. Let's one more round of applause. Our next presentation this evening is for a proclamation of April 3rd through 9th, which is National Library Week. Now, our librarian will be joining us remotely, I understand. So at this time, I just want to share our proclamation, and then I want to turn it over to Ms. Gloria to speak about all of the amazing things that are happening. National Library Week 2022, whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a series of connections and build community. Whereas libraries connect people to technology, providing access to broadband internet, computers, and training that are critical for accessing education and employment opportunities. Whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources. Whereas in times of crisis, libraries and library professionals play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity and access for all. Whereas to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons. Libraries have longed served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Tara Walter, mayor, proclaim National Library Week, April 3rd through 9th, 2022. During this week, I encourage all residents to connect with their library by visiting online or in person to gain access to resources and services. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Gloria. Gloria, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much for that. So exciting. I'm going to try to share my screen. Please let me know if you can see it.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, thank you for your time this evening. I apologize I wasn't able to be in person with you tonight. On behalf of the library team, I wanted to start with thanking council and administration for your continued support and advocacy of the library and library programming. While we recognize and celebrate National Library Week, I'd like to say a special thank you to library staff for all their hard work each and every day. I encourage and invite all members of the community to celebrate their library this week by stopping in and checking out what's new, figuratively and literally. Check out our new books and materials and check out our new spaces. And with that, I'll segue into a brief update on council requests on current library grant programs. So what's that? What's new at the library, you might ask? So much. Currently in progress, we have three library grant projects. The ARPA Learning Hub project, which awarded the library a bit over $23,000. Its focus is on education and workforce development. The second is the ARPA STEAM for Arizona Libraries project, which awarded the library approximately $18,000 in equipment. Locally, the equipment will be utilized in programming called Picking Up STEAM. Lastly, the LSTA Together in Florence Storywalk project, which awarded the library $5,000 to implement a story walk here in Florence. The learning comments are ready, minus a few small details. The current partnerships in place are Arizona At Work, providing resume. Central Arizona College kicks off GED classes tomorrow, and at last count, we had 15 people registered for GED instruction locally. Trey McLean has been offering for a few months now Computers 101 Sessions, which are one-on-one sessions with people when he's here at the library in this space. And kicking up later this month is Kami and Harmon, who will be teaching Cricket and Glowforge Basics. Picking Up STEAM. Most of the equipment awarded has arrived, and we have begun programming around it. Highlighted here are a few key pieces. I'll note that the library already owned the 3D printers, but now they are showcased in the new space. The big piece of equipment front and center is the Glowforge. And at the bottom left, it is an action cutting of wooden buttons. The Elgato on the bottom is a green screen that pops up in a matter of seconds. And along with the Fauxpic Light Kit, Media Studio Production Kit, and Lightbox, we hope our community finds interest in exploring some of these items as they create content for their endeavors, be it personal or professional. Lastly, on the bottom right is a Caesar overhead scanner. It scans documents, books, and pictures at the push of the button right to a USB drive. Last but not least is the LSTA Storywalk project, which will be implemented at Heritage Park. The posts seen in the picture have been ordered and should arrive mid-April. We hope the project will be completed mid-May, if not sooner. The project will host new stories quarterly, and its location was selected for its proximity to the library so the staff can monitor it routinely. Storywalk project to their parks to help bring literacy and motion together. Lastly, I'd like to mention all three grants run through August of this year. But with the foundational pieces we are implementing now, we hope these projects leave a lasting impression. As always, we acknowledge that they wouldn't be possible without the Arizona State Library Archives and Public Records and the Institute of Museum and Library Services. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about these projects at this time.
Council, do you have any questions regarding any of the projects that she, Ms. Gloria Moreno, had mentioned? Councilmember Rodriguez.
Just the only quick question I can perceive that the public might have, too, is after August of 2022, what's the projection of these programs continuing, as well as the infrastructure and access to the printers and such? What do we have after that point?
Let me see if I can hire this just a little bit. I'm having trouble hearing you. Give me one second. I think the question was regarding it lasting past the grant period, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. The instructors that we have in place will only be paid through that part, so we hope that after that, with interested people of the community, whether it be volunteers or staff programming, we will continue to implement some of these items. So the equipment that is currently present that was awarded will be there. It belongs to the library. So whether we have informal projects, informal programming, where people can pop in and play with the technology, my biggest hope with the Learning Hub is that it eventually segues to become a maker space. And so eventually, what I'd like to see happen in that space is that people will come in and be able to reserve time in the area, in the room, and go to town with the equipment. Use it, person of that audiovisual equipment, to create again either personal or professional content. And so that's the big project picture past this, is to use this space as a maker space and create it slowly through these grant opportunities into a maker space within the library.
Thank you, Gloria. I just wanted to also add on, thank you so much for all of your implementation of these ideas. I know these have been something we've talked about for a long time, so to see them be implemented in the library is fantastic. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Gloria. We really appreciate the programs. And just one suggestion that was brought forward to me was sharing the information as well with our local schools, so that way they're aware as well.
Perfect.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.
You, too. Our next item this evening is a presentation on the IIIMC election results. Lisa Garcia. Everybody knows Ms. Lisa Garcia, correct? Town clerk, interim town manager, amazing community member. So Lisa Garcia, and it's never easy to stand up here when somebody's reading about you, and she has no idea what I am going to say. She actually asked me. She said, "What are you saying tonight?" And I said, "Well, I promise you, it is all good because we love you, we appreciate you." And she gives ultimate service to our community. Lisa Garcia is the ultimate servant leader. She always reframes items with the lens of applied, "How can I help?" And with the extra assignments and special project leadership that she has undertaken, she has demonstrated her ability to lead in any situation. And it is character-revealing pattern behavior that greatly influences our organization as well as our community, and you have influenced all of these areas in the past 26 years of your service. Lisa is highly skilled. She knows how to build collaborative project teams, building organizational community together, around, to get things done, which is what she does, right? Lisa is fearless while embracing innovation, and she dedicates time to helping others embrace change. Lisa reaches her hands across the desk, the hall, the municipality as well, as the AMCA and the IIIMC clerk community to provide support, mentorship, and friendship. I know that she speaks with all of our council. I know that she talks with all of our staff and with our community. So she's continuously hearing everything that's, you know, happening and going on and concerns and questions, and she's answering them and responding on all levels, which is not an easy task to accomplish. And everybody that I've encountered has always left with a positive experience. Lisa builds these relationships with staff, council, and in the community across her association organizations with a supportive and caring emphasis that is highly sought after. There's many places that would love to have you as an employee, and I'm glad that you are here as our employee and friend. She has served six years on the Arizona Municipal Clerks Board. She is the Region 8 Director for the IIIMC, and you have spearheaded a task force for redistricting the Region 8 to provide more leadership opportunities within the region. In 2021, she has earned the recognition and title of Clerk of the Year for the state of Arizona. Since July of 2021, she has been actively pursuing an opportunity to serve as the IIIMC Vice President with support of mayor and council. On March 28th, 2022, it was announced that she was elected to office. Let's give her a round of applause really quick before we continue.
(Applause).
This election is a four-year commitment, beginning in May of 2022. She will serve one year as the Vice President, President-elect, President, and immediate past President. Each year, she will continue to ascend to the next office. The IMC's primary goal is to actively promote the continuing education and professional development of municipal clerks through extensive education programs, certification, publications, networking, annual conferences, and research. As an educational catalyst, IIIMC inspires clerks to expand and advance beyond their present levels of development, which she's already at the top of her game, so you'll just elevate the field even further. IIIMC engages in municipal research administration and enhances... But I read that part. All right, here's the best part. Are you guys ready? Here are the results. The votes cast were 2,232 votes. Necessary for election is 1,117 votes. And Ms. Garcia brought home 1,126 votes, coming out in first place. Second place was Janice M. Bates with 738 votes. And third place was Diane Fluskelde with 368 votes. She was elected with the majority votes. Ms. Garcia, I want to present you with the yellow flowers on behalf of our council and myself. Yellow is friendship, and you are a friend of Florence, and we are thankful that you are here. I just want to say thank you much, so much, to the mayor, the vice mayor, and the council for agreeing to allow me to pursue and be able to serve both as an IIIMC Region 8 Director with the last three years, but also to continue to pursue for the next four years and be their Vice President, immediate past President, and to understand that when I am president, that I will have to travel possibly around the globe to be able to support, recommend, and to promote the position of the clerk, which I feel is the most important position in municipal government. Sorry, guys. It brings the transparency of government, and it makes sure that the citizens, as well as the council, has access to all of the records that they need to make decisions. I'm very proud of my career, and I'm very proud to be honored by the members of IIIMC for selecting me as their 2022 Vice President. Thank you.
(Applause).
Yeah. My microphone wants me to. Sure. All right. Item seven, Consent Agenda. All items on the Consent Agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the Consent Agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time and the agenda item is called. Item A, Proclaim April 2022 as Fair Housing Month. Item B, Approval to Enter Into an Intergovernmental Agreement, JPA/IGA 12541 AG, Contract Number P0012012001857. Amendment Number Three with the Arizona Department of Transportation for proposed design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction of a roundabout at State Route 287 and SR79B, CIP T14 Roundabout Improvements, SR287 and SR79B. Sorry, I keep wanting to say 78. Authorize staff to post the notice of the intention to increase property tax on the town website. That's Item C. Item D, Adoption of Resolution Number 1822-22, a resolution of the town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, approving and authorizing the acceptance of donated funds from Phyllis B. Owen? Sorry if I didn't say that right. Owen. Ooh. Nuean of Talcot Resolution Life Insurance Company for the town of Florence, Dorothy Nolan Senior Center, and the town of Florence, Arizona, and naming the deputy town manager, town clerk, Lisa Garcia, to sign all necessary documents and authorized acceptance of funds. Item E, Approval to Purchase a New Broth RTC 350 Road Broom Using the City of Tucson Cooperative Contract Number 161534 That Expires July 31st, 2022, An Amount Not To Exceed $96,131.16. Item F, Approval of the January 3rd, January 5th, and January 18th, 2022 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Item G, Receive and File the Following Board of Commissions Minutes, January 26th, 2022 Historic District Commissions Minutes, January 20th, and March 3rd, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes. Those are the items. If there's anyone who would like to have an item removed, council?
Those are the items. If there's anyone who would like to have an item removed, council?
I'd like to have C removed.
Are there any others? Seeing no others, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the removal of Item C. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. Item C, Councilmember Hughes.
I know that one of the things I was looking at is that it's going to be for the primary property tax, as well as the two slids that are just coming up, six and seven. My comment is that we're in a really rough year. Our salary, our budget has been cut a lot, and I see that it's going to go into the General Fund, which is distributed between Administration, Community Services, Community Development, and then Public Safety. I would like to recommend that we would take this primary increase for the property tax and dedicate it to public safety only. Those two areas, they rely very heavily on grants for funding and for retention of any of the employees and things. I just thought that instead of it funding Administration and Services and Development, that it would be, it would help those two departments out.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council, the property tax levy is for the general distribution to the General Fund. Can you hear me?
No.
Okay.
Real close.
Historically, and the purpose of the property tax levy, primary property tax levy, is to fund all of the departments in the General Fund. They don't go to any specific fund. Overall, we pool all the monies together, and then as the departments need them, that is how they're allocated. As you are aware, Public Safety gets the majority of the budget within our General Fund. So this distribution, of course, I don't know how that we would go about allocating it specifically to Public Safety when generally it's just a total allocation to all the departments within the General Fund. And this property tax levy is just a notification to post on the website. It's a formality for, to comply with state law just in case we do provide an increase to the property tax rate itself. We can discuss this further, and we can have further research on this, but at this time, this is all that this is for, is to go ahead and publicly post the notice of intention.
And I did, I did understand that. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't let it go too far down the road before I brought that one section, because in your description for the agenda for the packet, you named four different departments. It's Admin, Public Safety, Community Services, and Community Development. It didn't go across the board, so that's what made me confused.
Well, whenever you look at your budget, that's how it's split up in the budget itself. Administration has several different departments under it. Public Safety has Police and Fire. Community Development has certain areas that we accumulate in there. Parks and Recreation does too. It has several budgets included in there. So you can see that allocation when we prepare the budget for you.
So on a side note, because, gosh, it's so exciting to talk about creating a tax that would be just for Police and Fire. Becky's going to kill me, but it's so exciting. At one time, council did a 2% food tax, and that was earmarked by the voters to be just towards Parks and Recreation, new facilities. If council's asking for us to look into taxes that could be earmarked for a specific purpose that would be elected on by the voters at a future election, we would be happy to do so.
Very much. I just want to add that I think the concern is that Councilwoman Hughes has, and I share the same concern, our competition is getting increasingly more hectic. We are falling further behind. We're already behind on these salaries, and we're falling further behind if you talk to officers and emergency services over in Queen Creek or anywhere like that. We are falling behind on salaries, so we definitely need to find ways to help fund these two departments, because otherwise, we are going to be desperate in trying to figure out how to run our departments as our staff exits to go find better pay. And ultimately, we all know that everybody wants to be paid a fair amount, and they're all looking for retirement. At the end of the day, when you work in those departments, you're hoping to build your retirement so that one day you can relax on a beach somewhere. So I would support us looking at something like that, and I don't support taxes, so that's kind of crazy.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes, would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we adopt Number C from the Consent Agenda. We go ahead and approve it?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item AA is new business. This is authorization to enter into an on-call engineering services agreement with Wilson Engineers using the City of Buckeye's Cooperative Contract Number 2022-003-38, On Call Consulting for Engineering and Architectural Services, which expires on 12/13/2022 for an amount not to exceed $500,000. Mr. Chris Dallas.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Cordis. As was discussed previously, the town has received our WIFA allocations, both for water and wastewater, simply speaking, as well as additional ARPA funds. This puts us in a position where our current on-call contracts are unable to stay up. We're struggling for them to find the resources. As we're discussing labor force across the United States and Arizona, it's difficult to hire enough professionals all across the board. So they're struggling, and we need to expand our stay-up with our planned CIP. And Wilson is a, probably one of the top state for utilities.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes. Is this going to be a cart-bought contract for $500,000, or do we make releases that we have to approve?
This is a master on-call contract that would not come back to council for each approval. It is done to expedite types of projects, like all of our on-call contracts are.
I just mean that we're authorizing $500,000 to be spent, and we really don't know what
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve Item A, Authorized to Enter Into an On-Call Engineering Service Agreement with Wilson Engineering using the City of Buckeye's Cooperative Contract Number 2022-0038. I read that wrong. Number 2022-003.38, On Call Consulting for Engineering and Architectural Services, which expires 12/13/2022 for an amount not to exceed $500,000. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
And motion carries. Thank you so much. Item nine is our legislative report. Mr. Jeff Graves?
Good evening. How's my volume?
We can hear you, but for some reason, staff microphones are very quiet. They're not, they're not loud enough. I wonder if we can get you a handheld. Would you be able to get that? That one seems to project.
I can get. Hello?
Yeah.
A little bit better? Okay. All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I just wanted to pass along a few additional updates to accompany this month's report. First off, today is the 85th day of the current legislative session, so we're fast approaching the end of this particular session, which will be on April 20th, which will mark the 100th day. With that, committee activity is wrapping up. Last week was the final week for cross-chamber committee hearings, and the final committees that meet are House and Senate appropriations to wrap up work from the other committees. Those two committees had multi-day agendas last week. Fortunately, there weren't any big surprises in terms of last-minute strike-everything amendments. However, House Bill 2749 did make it through Senate appropriations. That's item number five on tonight's report. That bill would exempt housing alterations from the prime contracting tax as long as those alterations did not increase the square footage of a home. So if there's a remodel or refurbish in town, only the materials purchased, wherever they were purchased, would be taxed. So that's one such bill that went, that made it through kind of at the 11th hour last week. Since we are approaching the end of the session, bills are starting to make their way to the governor for signature. In terms of bills that we were tracking, Senate Bill 1275 was signed. That bill would prohibit overnight fireworks except on specific holidays, which was a LEAK-backed bill this year. The next two bills that were signed were bills of concern for the LEAK. First was House Bill 2107, which would prohibit mayors from issuing business closures during emergencies. I think that was aimed at COVID, but it does apply to all emergencies. And then Senate Bill 1273, which would allow motorcycles to overtake stop-to vehicles as long as they don't exceed 15 miles per hour. So those two bills were signed as well. Finally, there's still no word on a potential special session, which was being considered to repeal and accelerate last year's income tax cut. So we'll see if that comes together in the weeks ahead. I think the idea with that is to repeal last year's action, as that's going to referendum this year. Repealing it would remove it from the ballot, and then accelerating it would just accelerate the tax cut aimed in last year's proposal. And so we'll see if that materializes in the weeks ahead as we move towards budget. With that, that's the majority of the major legislative updates, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions regarding the legislative update? Thank you for your presentation. Item 10 is our manager's report.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council, I just wanted to let you know what an amazing job our Police, Fire, and our PIO did when we were going through the emergency of our dispatch situation. Not only did they come up with solutions to make sure that our citizens were 100% protected, which we expect from any good leader of a, of a public safety, but also they worked with the PIO to make sure that the citizens were aware, knew what we were going to do, how long we would be out of loop, and, and make sure that we're providing those in the newspaper as well as on social media. So I'm very proud of the entire team. I'm also proud that they continue to work together to bring back a system that will be new and improved and have all kinds of updated disciplines that both are equally supportive of and involved in. So we have a great team. I also want to say thank you to the department heads for working so diligently and in an effort of a time where people could sit back and take it easy until our next town manager is hired. They continue to work at a pace like no other to make sure that they're bringing projects across the line, and I'm just impressed, and I'm happy that I work with such an amazing crew. So thank you.
Thank you. Department reports. Are there any members of council that have questions regarding any of the items contained within? Councilmember Hughes.
Is Keith here? Oh, he's online. Okay. The one thing that I wanted to let everybody know is that, since we're trying to revamp and do code enforcement, is that there is a list of, right at 30-day, they're getting ready to be taken to, I think they're going to move over to you, Cliff. Is that not correct? Code enforcement? It is not to you yet?
Yeah.
Okay, Keith, can you, can you tell, tell them where it's at and when it's going to be coming to Cliff?
His computer is locked up right now. He just sent me a message, so he cannot. I can tell you that the team just had a series of new code enforcement issues that have made it through the 30-day mark.
Right.
They're sending out notices, and they will go through the cycle to be able to come to the attorney. Exciting news of the department is, is that they're working on their first draft of the code.
Okay.
That will change the enforcement, and we will be very soon to announce when we will have a work session with council to discuss those codes. And at that time, we can get into detail about where the cases are in the process.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, let, let the public know that we are on top of this, that we all feel the same, same way about getting our town brought it back up to the pride that we know that it should be.
And since, since the team has also been taking a diligent approach, I can say, as I drive home and I drive by the various locations, I can see significant improvement that property owners are making. So congratulations to those property owners that are taking pride in our, our community.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Are there any others? All right. Councilmember Anderson, go ahead.
I have a comment about the code enforcement. What was the last month? 100 items on that. Have one person doing all that. Person needs to be complimented, but he needs some help.
Thank you. We have our second call to the public at this time. If there's anybody who would like to speak, either in person or online? All right. Closing our second call to the public. Moving into our call to the council,
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Neal?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Hughes?
Well, I went to the Seventh Annual Road to Country Thunder Saturday. It was awesome. It seemed like there was tons and tons of people there. I don't know what the, Ali, do you know what the count was?
Not at the moment. I need to catch up with Chief and PD and see what our parking situation looked like, but I would guess more than 4,000 people in attendance.
So one of the things that is, is what I think is awesome is that one of our local bands, Tenth and Main, made it to the Country Thunder. They're going to be, they have a primetime spot at 7:00 PM on Friday night, and they'll be performing on the Copperhead Stage. So I'm, it's so exciting to see one of our, our locals. And one of our very own employees is part of Tenth and Main, and he runs the vocal, Tanner Foster. So a shout-out to him, and job well done. And it looked great. It really did. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Well, I think I've said most of the things. I just wanted to back up what Lisa said about the, kind of basically sort of coming to our rescue dispatch. Our chief and police chief are forward to a permanent solution. Other thing, a comment on Lisa is that video got to sync with the audio. Other thing, a comment on Lisa is that video got a sync with the audio. You speak, your mouse is doing this, but the voice is doing something else. So. Think it's sort of distracting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
A lot of the things I wanted to talk about have been covered. So I'm really proud of the events that are happening in our community and seeing us, us able to come together to support each other and to welcome the visitors that we have. It's fantastic. Um, I certainly want to take this moment to go back to congratulate Lisa on your election. Um, I personally have always looked up to you in a professional manner in the way that you're able to always be diverse in your skills and you're always able to adapt. And so, um, I want to congratulate you again, um, for your election results. And I know that no matter where your professional career takes you, that you'll always be able to bend and adapt to that situation. So, so proud of you, um, as a staff member and as a friend.
Vice Mayor Cordes?
Uh, just want to remind all the parents at home that Country Thunder starts rolling in on Wednesday. So those high school kids need to leave a little bit earlier and probably find an alternative route to get to school. I know the last one kind of caught everybody off-guard and so there were kids that basically just turned around and went back home after sitting in traffic for two hours. And so definitely encourage you to have your kids go a different direction to get there. Um, I'm going to boast a little bit about myself. Uh, the Say Yes to Prom event was this last weekend. That is a Penile County event. So it is not just, um, something that I do. It's promoted throughout Penile County. And we had, uh, people come from as far as Wilcox, which I have no idea where that's at. But it was a, quite a drive for this young man who brought his girlfriend down to find her the perfect prom dress. Um, and so it was a, it was a great success and we look forward to keep doing that here in the town of Florence. We fought hard to get it back into the town. So it is here. And, um, I want to congratulate Lisa as always. I've probably told you congratulations a million times. Since it's happened, um, they are blessed to have you and your energy. And I think our chiefs, both of our chiefs are doing a great job. And I want to commend both of you for, um, standing up and protecting this community at all times. And that's it.
Thank you. Right.
Mayor, may I just bring up something that, that reminded me about Country Thunder? We got a notice today that 287 is going to be one, uh, fourth.
It'll be okay.
It'll be okay?
It'll be okay.
Thanks, thanks.
They're working around it, trust me. We do not want to add any, any additional wrenches into the cogs that are spinning around. I am thankful for everybody in communicating and working that out, ensuring ease of flow of traffic. We always know that during these times, plan ahead. It is going to, uh, draw a lot of traffic into our area. Country Thunder is said to be one of the largest pop-up cities across the country and it happens right here in Florence, Arizona. So we, we love to have them here. What is it? It is. It is sold out. So thank you for being here. Road to Country Thunder was a huge success. There was anticipated about 4,000 people, I believe it, because looking down Main Street, it was all the way down and it was spread out on the side streets. Everybody had such a fun time. And Judy, when you mentioned, uh, Tenth and Main singing, actually when Tanner broke into the Creedence Clearwater Revival song, it sounded exactly like the record. So I had to tell them that afterwards. So I was pretty impressed because those vocals are challenging to achieve. Um, I wanted to share our general plan update. Just a reminder that the formal 60-day comment period was up on March 19th. The consultant has compiled all comments received for inclusion in the staff report for the Planning and Zoning Commission, public hearings, which are scheduled for April 7th and the 21st of 2022. Many of the comments were grammatical, spelling, format, and they are going to be corrected as the plan moves forward in the process. Comment and mapping change requests will be evaluated and discussed with the commission for their input and their consideration. The 2022 general plan is still on schedule for a May 16th, 2022 Town Council public hearing and action. And I encourage you to check out our calendar of events. Community Services, thank you so much for everything that you have been coordinating and putting on with the community. I believe the HOP event is this Saturday and it is from 9:00 to 11:00 AM at Heritage Park. So please bring the family out. We're all about family fun here in Florence and we'd love to see you out. We do have an executive session this evening and at this time I do need a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second. We do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries and we are adjourned.